Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
The St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greatap?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? See, none. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I would so move.
Court? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard, item number three. Are there any citizens to be heard this evening, Human Services Committee? Seeing none, we will move to updates. Updates by Commissioners, there Mr. Kaufman? No updates this evening, okay. Conceptual initiatives. I don't see anyone moving for a piece of paper, so we'll say none. Old business? New business? Item 7A, Library Board Bylaws. Let me make the motion. Moved by Mr. Bohm to approve the Library Board Bylaws.
Seconded motion to send it on to the full board.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those nay? Motion carried. Item 7B, Recovery Discovery Day Proclamation for Final Action.
I would move that the proclamation for Recovery Discovery Day be approved by this board.
Court? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Mr. Heidemann, are you going to make the presentation?
I will make the presentation on the 10th, Community Mental Health, out on Electric. I think everyone knows where it's at.
All right. Fine. Thank you very much, Howard.
Be sometime between, I think, 3:00 and 5:00.
Okay.
Because we have another meeting that day, too.
All right. Other Human Services Matters, item number eight. Seeing none, move to information only. Seeing none, move down to receive and file packets. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Move to have a motion to adjourn?
Go vote.
Is there a second? To adjourn? All the... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. What will we do, Tim?
All right. No missteps this time.
(laughing) It was only one item.
All right, let's call the meeting to order of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee. The clerk will take the roll, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greatap?
Here.
We do have a couple of additions to the agenda, so if we can get 2A to become 7B and 2B to become 7C...
I'd make that motion.
Second. Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can we approve the agenda then?
I... I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any citizens to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting tonight? Hearing none. Updates from any Commissioners? I would... I would have one. I would like to compliment both the city of Elginak and the Sheriff's Department. On Sunday last, they did the ceremony where the sheriff took over the police department in Elginak. From the beginning to the end of this process, it was handled in the most professional way I've ever seen things handled. There was no arguments, there was no fighting, there was no anything, and it just flowed absolutely beautifully from beginning to end. Everybody did their part. The council members in Elginak stood up to the plate, did what they needed to do. The city manager did his part, the sheriff and all of his people did their part, and the ceremony went just absolutely great. They had over 100 people in the fire hall that they cleared out. They had some food and drinks there. They had all of the officers on the stage. They were all dressed in their blue uniforms. Partway through the ceremony, they all left the stage. Five officers that were hired and the four part-time reservists that were hired left the stage, came back about 10 or 15 minutes later dressed in their brown uniforms.
Wow.
And it really... It really looked good. The sheriff then put a badge on each one of the officers. He then swore them in. A lot of pictures were taken. Then they unveiled the sign. Most of you have seen it. It was in the Times Herald on the front page. And then they toured the new facility that was partially remodeled for this substation. It came off without a hitch, and I was... I'm very proud of Elginak for their part in it and very proud of the Sheriff's Department for what they did, so...
He had nice coverage in the Times Herald as well.
Yes, they did. And so I just wanted to make that publicly known that I thought everybody did their part. And there were other people involved in this, too. The outgoing police chief had a part in it. Carl Tomian, who was city manager for a part of the time, had a part in it. So it really, really went well. So thank you to everybody who did that, and I'm sure everybody was pleased. Conceptual initiatives. Old business, nothing. New business. Item A is the LEEDS Online Service Agreement from the Sheriff's Department. This is a piece of software that allows the sheriff to kind of cool things, if you will, regarding stolen property, all of the pawn shops in the county. And with this particular piece, they are able to follow stolen property that's put in there. And if something comes along, gets put in there, it kind of matches things up. About $4,300 per year, and it comes out of some money that they have. I believe they're going to use confiscated funds budget.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the LEEDS proposal before us. Support.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion or questions, gentlemen? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 7B. That would be the fiscal year 2013 Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application. I believe it was on your table when you arrived today. This is a federal grant with no local match.
I'd make a motion.
Second. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion?
Just a comment.
Heidemann?
I was in attendance at the Michigan Association Counties Conference, and one of the booths that I stopped by, they had those electronic devices for monitoring alcohol. And it also has a GPS for $11 a day. They can monitor, you know, someone that may have been a first-time offender or whatever. And not only know whether they've been drinking, but also where they're at. So if they've been drinking, they can make a beeline right to them. So anyway, for $11 a day. And I'm hoping that our judges are looking at those kind of alternatives rather than sentencing in jail because that... It gets a little expensive when you put someone behind bars.
I think you're going to find more and more of that technology coming out. I mean, they seem like they improve it every time you turn around, there's something new.
It was... I was really impressed.
Very good. Any other discussions on the matter? Okay, to move it to the full board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7C is a letter of agreement with Community Mental Health for Prevention Services for the Intervention Center inmates. That copy was also in front of you when you arrived today. I see that Jerry Sommer is here. If we have any questions? Okay.
I'd make a motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Support.
And a motion to support. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
It was pretty... Pretty clear.
Any other judiciary or public safety matters? Information only, receive and file then, guys.
Move to receive and file packets.
Support. Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen? Move, we adjourn. Support. Motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
My turn. My turn. You're going to have to wait your turn.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order and start by... Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greatap?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here. Any addition, changes, or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I would accept the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Support.
Supported. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard on environmental and public works matters? We have an update on the capital improvement, and we've got the center from Metropolitan Planning.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lindsay Wallace. I'm a relatively new planner to the Planning Commission. I'm a transportation planner, but I am working on the capital improvement program for 2013 to 2017, and I'm here to give you a little bit of an update. All right. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act gives Planning Commission the task of developing a capital improvement program. The CIP is a financial master plan that prioritizes all of the county's capital improvements in one single document. It is a tool to implement the goals, policies of the master plan, and other functional plans in the various departments. It communicates priorities, reasoning, and financial information not only to the organization, but most importantly, to the general public. We also know that the CIP can contribute positively to the county's board rating. Each year, when the bond rating agencies call, carry, have the financial advisor, and ask a series of 20 or so questions, whether the county has a CIP, is typically one of those questions. So that's another good reason why the CIP is a good thing for the county to have. What is a capital improvement? It's a major, infrequent, or not reoccurring expenditure that totals over $100,000. It can include acquisitions of land or equipment, new constructions, modifications to a facility, and upkeep and maintenance of a facility or equipment. So the process began in April, and the departments submitted proposed projects a month later. Based on the information that provided by the departments, the MPC staff then filtered the proposals into prioritization matrix using specific criteria, which I'll talk about later. In June or July, the departments made presentations to the Metropolitan Planning Commission about their projects. A public hearing was held August 15th at the Planning Commission meeting, and following the public hearing, the Planning Commission made its final validation of the prioritization matrix, and the Planning Commission approved the CIP at the September meeting. Each of the proposed project fits into one of these four categories. The maintenance of existing equipment, replacement of an existing equipment, expansion of an existing program, or a new program. Based on each proposed project, it is then prioritized as a high priority project, a medium priority project, or a low priority project using the following criteria and performance markers. The application forms then departments are submitted requires the departments to address each of those criteria items. So depending on the information that they provide us, then the Metropolitan Planning staff is able to prioritize the project in the appropriate category. So based on the project type, whether it be a maintenance project, a replacement project, an expansion of existing programs, or a new program, the priority level, which would be a high, medium, or low based on those performance markers, each proposed project falls into a corresponding location on the matrix. And depending on where it falls on the matrix, it becomes either a Level A project, a Level B project, or Level C project. Level A is identified as the highest consideration of funding, while Level C would be the least consideration of funding.
Can you go back to that one slide a minute and spend just a little bit more time explaining that, how that... How we read that?
All right. Well, as I mentioned in this slide right here, all of the projects were asked to answer these questions and where they rank. If the project is mandated by a local, state, or federal regulation, whether it protects health, safety, welfare of the public, whether it is a high priority of the county board, or it has project measurable economic benefits or development potential, economic development potential, those would be high category projects.
Okay.
Anything that falls in there. And then so forth for the medium and the low. So based on if they received any of those high markers, they would be considered a high priority. So they would be in this column all the way to the left.
You can walk a little bit further if you want.
Okay. It would fall into this high category.
All right.
If it met any of those four markers that I explained earlier. And then if it's a maintenance project or replacement, maintenance of existing equipment or replacement of existing equipment, it would be Level A. So it would be in one of these. And then... So that's how it would be ranked high in Level A, is if it met these criterias and was a maintenance project or a replacement of an existing program or project.
If it met, going back to your other slide, if it met the high piece there...
I have that.
Now go back to the other slide. But it was in expansion or new programs, it's not going to be...
Well, it could be if it met any of these... Those four things. Those four things are the key things that would make it be a high project. Yeah. Does that make sense?
I guess I'm just having a hard time following the color scheme in there.
And this is going to be a pretty vague question. If you go back one, in Level B, the project is supported by county master plan or other departmental plan, how would it not be included in the master plan? You could... Because I've been involved with writing master plans, that you're going to put something in there that could potentially be in the best interest of the county. So that's a pretty vague. You could put anything in the medium, then.
Right. So here's a summary table from the projects that were proposed this year. As you can see, that there were five projects that fell into the Level A category totaling $11,149,000, and eight projects that fell into the Level B category totaling $12,010,000. Again, this table's not saying a project should or should not happen, nor does it mean that this... Because this is a proposed project listed under a particular year, that it has to happen in that year. How these projects ultimately end up in the county budget is responsibility of the department to work on and go through with a normal budget process.
Could I ask you one more question? This is for 2013 through 2017. So you have everything but all of them are 2013, except two that are in 2015.
Right. This is what the departments indicated.
I understand.
But we have nothing else scheduled for 2014, 2016, or 2017 at the current moment.
Correct.
Commissioner, if you look at the document that Ms. Wallace supplied to us, you go to page 38 of the CIP, labeled Appendix C.
Okay.
You'll see priority projects from 2013 all the way out to 2016 that are listed here. Back one page, you had it. The right... The right-hand page.
4A, is it?
It's marked 4A, but in the middle of the page, at the bottom, it says page 38. And you'll see on the far-right column, under year, so there are projects that have been submitted by departments that range anywhere from 2013 all the way out to 2016.
Right. That matches this, though.
Correct.
For 2013 to 2017, departments submitted proposals for $23,159,000 in capital improvements through 2017. You'll note in the CIP document that the Finance Director provided recommendations on funding sources for each project. Funding sources included economic development funds, public improvement funds, grants, the general fund, and the park millage.
And I know you're new at this, but if I don't ask questions, I won't know.
Right.
Because included in this document is the convention center of $9 million. Of course, that spreads over 30 years. But you're including whatever projects are, whether it's a bond, whether it's 10 years, you include the total dollar amount for this plan.
Yes. Whatever the department submitted to us as the dollar amount.
Okay, so you wouldn't take the $9 million.
Commissioner Ward?
Dave, the 30 years is only the payback of the bond. When you spend the money, it goes in the year that you spend the money. So that's why it all goes in next year. I think it actually stretches between 13 and 14, because that's when you're spending the money.
If you have any questions, you can contact our office and me personally regarding the CIP, and I'd be happy to explain the process more. And 2014, 2018, the CIP development will begin in April. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Wait, Lindsay, don't run. Commissioner London has a question.
Well, I was just wondering, Lindsay, would it be possible to get a sheet of that, the prior... How you prioritize the...
Yeah, and I actually... Yes, absolutely.
Prioritize the projects, because that's not in our back.
Right. I actually had a handout for that. That explains it in a lot more depth.
Thank you.
I can get that to you.
Any other questions for Lindsay? Seeing none? Thank you. Conceptual initiatives. Any conceptual initiatives? Seeing none? Old business. I see Director Burchew here with the Light Station Coastal Management Grant Contract. We've talked about this already one other time, haven't we?
I guess at your last meeting, you approved the base contracts for the project. If you remember, we were substantially under budget, the grant budget. So with the approval of the Coastal Zone Management Coordinator and the State Historic Preservation Office, we were authorized to add on to the contracts to maximize the improvements we do under the grant budget. I'm asking for three things tonight. First, asking you to formally approve the change in scope, which is the amendment to the grant contract.
Okay. Could we have a motion to that effect? Commissioner Bohm? Second?
Support.
Commissioner Ward? Any questions or discussions regarding changing the scope of the work for this grant? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, the second request?
Item two is to approve a change order number one under the contract with DNE Landscaping. The work involves adding a second ADA walkway, repairing damaged historic sidewalks, and creating a second interpretive patio on the property. There is a... You have in your packet a... The change order itself, you'll notice that the numbers typed in were the agreed-upon unit... The units and the unit prices that were... The unit prices were in the original bid document that the contractor bid on. So by agreeing to, say, the first item, walkway between driveway, 63 square feet at $250, and it's just a matter of doing the math. There are some items under the change order that are lump sums that had to be proposed and accepted by the consultant, and you see those. Those are the items that are actually penciled into your document. That is where the contractor proposed this, is a lump sum to do that work. And the contractor and I have reviewed those lump sums and agree with them. So we're at this... Tonight, I'm asking to approve Change Order One to the DNE Landscaping Contract in the amount of $16,290.80.
I would entertain a motion to send this to the full board for approval.
So moved. Support.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the motion. Commissioner Bohm, second by Commissioner London. Any questions for Mark regarding this?
Miss, I believe that we were actually trying to get you to allow the change order committee authority over that at your last meeting, and my... I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm told that the direction was to bring it back to the committee for final action.
You...
Because this is cement work, and it's in the fall, we... You know, we need to get it.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't at the meeting, but that's what I was still on about.
Is that okay with the maker of the motion to make this for final action?
Yep.
In a second?
Yes.
We will need a roll call on that, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yep.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatap?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
And just to further explain, the reason we're able to do so much of this additional work is the original grant budget was based on stained and stamped concrete. That was our assumption of the requirement for the State Historic Preservation Officer. We were fortunate that our consultant and I were able to convince the officer that we didn't have to go to that added expense to differentiate new sidewalks from historic sidewalks. So that's why we're in this position of being able to get so much more work done under the grant.
How much did that save us, Mark?
Well, it's almost allowed us to double the amount of work.
The grant was for $60,000.
$60,344.
So basically, Commissioner London, we were able to spend the full amount of the grant.
Commissioner Ward?
I just put you on the spot, Mark. This morning on the radio, I... The director at the museum was talking about the number of visitors to the light station. Can you quote that? It was a big number.
It's over 12,000.
Yeah, it was a big number.
It's been spectacular attendance.
And that's since May?
Yes, since the grand reopening in May 19th.
I just think that's fantastic that that's become available to the public. I mean, I'm assuming that we have no idea how many are in town and out of town, but...
They do take a... Have a guestbook and ask for zip codes, and they're planning to give us a report on where the visitors are coming from.
But I just think you guys have done a great job.
It's very common when I'm up there during the weekday, if you see five cars, it's not uncommon to see at least one odd estate license plate on the property.
It's a great project. Just curious, how do they find it? I mean, I don't see a whole lot of signage up directing people to it.
It's tall.
It's tall.
The, the good news is, there's all kinds of websites dedicated to lighthouse. The bad news is the signage is really bad to actually find the exact lighthouse. Under the mitigation, one of the mitigation grants that, that the city received for the bridge project was to do some signage, and they are working with MDOT to start doing directional signage to get people from the expressway in Pine Grove down towards the raw waterfront and all the attractions we have down there, including the Convention Center and museums.
Excellent. Yeah, because if we have 12,000 this year, we want 24,000 next year.
Sure.
Good goal. And the third item.
The next item is, there was a separate contract for Panier Graphics to do interpretive signs. We're, because we're going to add the secret interpretive patio, we want to install, and I think that's behind that, the next page in your packet that was given to you tonight actually shows the half-circle plaza, I believe you have that in your packet, shows four interpretive panels and two circular benches there. So this change order, or additional quotation, covers, and you may ask why there's only two interpretive panels and four bases. Originally, the project proposed to put two interpretive panels in the Flog Signal Building, which is serving as the gift shop right now. And frankly, the Port Huron Museum has lots of merchandise they'd like to sell, so we all agreed that we'd move those two designated interpretive panels out onto the next patio and leave plenty of room for merchandise, which has been selling very well at the light station, too. So we would ask for you to approve this additional quotation from Panier for $2,708. That includes additional shipping costs, and what we negotiated with the committee was, in order to make sure the contractor, the cement contractor that has to install the signs is not held up if we're tweaking what message is going to be on the panels, they'll ship all the bases and the panels, the bases that hold the panels, so they can be installed by the contractor, and then when the interpretive panels themselves can be shipped separately, when they're exactly the way we want them, and then they just slide into the frames. So there's a little additional shipping cost associated to that, but the value is we don't hold one part of the construction up for the interpretive panels.
Okay, and I assume then you want this for final action, too? Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we have final action.
Support. Commissioner London, any other discussion? All in favor, oh, well, we have to have a roll call on that, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
While you're up there, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, the last page of your packet is our progress, project progress Excel sheet. This is the first that we've put it together, includes both the base bids and the change orders you approved tonight to kind of give you an explanation of what's been approved, what's been spent already. And we'll go a few, a few dollars over the 60,344, but we're able to get a lot more improvements on the project, so.
Just a, a quick question for you. I noticed that there's some fencing that's in, in this. Did I see some, I'm sure I saw where there's some fencing, decorative fencing? No, no decorative fencing?
No.
Just, just-
There's silt fencing.
Oh, okay.
We have to comply with Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control laws, and so we have silt fencing, that's, that's on the plan.
Okay.
You might have seen that, saw the word fencing there.
But that's temporary while you do any excavations.
Right, that comes down after we reestablish the grass and the sandy soil.
Yeah, I was kind of hoping that would replace the chain link fence.
No, that's just a silt fencing.
Oh, okay.
And we, we thought we might be required to do an Army Corps of Engineers permit, and you see an application, a couple of application fees on there, in their, the staff finally, after much review, decided the project didn't warrant us taking out a Corps of Engineers permit for sidewalks, so we're happy for that.
Dodged a bullet there.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no other questions, Commissioner Greitath?
Real quick, will the light station close for the winter, or do you stay open?
They are going to stay open up, up until just before Christmas. They are a gift shop operator, so they see an opportunity to sell a lot of lighthouse merchandise for folks that know folks that they want to give lighthouse gifts to.
Then you'll reopen in the spring?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
New business, the Metropolitan Planning Commission Bylaw Amendment.
Hello, I'm Lori Eisenberg with the Planning Commission, and we just have a really minor amendment to our bylaws involving the Executive Committee to have the authority to make very small changes in between main Metropolitan Planning Commission meetings, small meeting like letters of support when people ask us for letters of support, clearinghouse reviews from SEMCOG, or text amendments for zoning ordinances, but no map changes and nothing that involves money. So we already have the Executive Committee established, and so we just want to add those duties.
And that's outlined on the top of page four on the handout that's provided.
I don't have your packet, but I believe I have what you got, so I don't know if it's page four, but it says proposed amendment to MPC bylaws.
I have it on page four.
Hi. Any other questions or discussions regarding this?
I'd make a motion.
Commissioner Ward has made a motion. Commissioner Rushing has seconded.
Oh, no, I want to-
Go ahead and question.
Has there ever been an instance to where this needs to be done? Why are we putting this in there? Because potentially, you could end up going back and forth. Let's say you make corrections, and it's a township that's involved or a village, and you make a correction, a recommendation, and it isn't what they actually want. If you don't have the full board there, the committee there to do this, you're just going to have the Executive Committee.
Well, we always have a, a meeting every month. Rarely, if we don't have any motions or anything that they need to vote on. Probably once a year, we don't have a meeting, but this is kind of different than that. In between meetings, that, you know how timing is, because you're from a township. Their boards, maybe they need something quick, or a letter of support from an organization might need the kiss of the Planning Commission. So the Executive Committee is three different people, and we just want permission to do that.
Well, being a previous township supervisor, you're going to be looking at the zoning text amendments.
Text amendments only, right.
Not that, you're going to change the maps, but zoning is pretty serious.
Right.
I was just wondering, is there ever an instance where that had to be done, where a timeframe, because I know it's a township, I've never had a case where CBA had to forward something to the-
I can't recall, but we've had, right, because usually, within 30 days, we have a meeting. I can't recall that it's had to happen.
So I'm just curious, why are we, to me, this could be potentially substantial. Why are we making amendment if we've never had two in the past? That's just a question again.
Right.
Why have an amendment in there?
Well, we're also asking for them to do letters of support.
Right.
You could change it if you wished and take out the zoning text portion.
If we had a past history to where we've had to do this, and that it's a necessary means for the Planning Commission to do this, then I could see addressing this, but if you can't think of a single instance that this has happened in the past.
I'm a planner, so I would, I could look up our records and come back, if that's what you'd wish. I could look up our records and see if, if that portion has, has happened before.
I just know zoning is very important.
Right.
So even if it's a text amendment, and you, let's say, your, your revision is incorrect.
Right.
Potentially, that could happen, and you forward it back, and then it has to be sent back again, so I'm just-
Good point.
Okay, any other questions for Lori? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think I'll-
Perhaps we can get that information to Commissioner Rushing before the board meeting.
Certainly.
The regular board meeting.
Now, that's, that would just send it to the full board, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, sure I will.
Just send it, so we can follow up on that. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll stay up here, because I'm next.
Oh, you're going to do the Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant?
Yes.
That's neat. Okay.
Yes, it's very helpful. What we're asking for, a year and a half ago, we got 1.29 million dollars for neighborhood stabilization within three target areas, two in the city of Port Huron, and one in Marine City, and we were moving along very well with those projects. Our projects were broken down into five different, separate activities, and the money was allocated in those five separate activities. And there's a rule with HUD that you have to have 50% of your grant money expended within two years, and we're on track to do that. That's next spring. But there's also a rule in there for NSP III only, that only 10% of your grant money can go towards demolition. So we are asking, we want to ask HUD for a waiver, but first, we need to go through you, to make our demolition total 18% of our grant instead of 10%. Because the activity number four, which is rehab assistance for home buyers, it's where home buyers that qualify, they purchase a foreclosed home, and they have to go through all kinds of paperwork. It's quite a process. They also go to school, and they get monitoring and financial education. And then they find a contractor, and it's for energy-efficient rehab inside and then exterior renovations, and they, it's $25,000. And we had totaled 15 homes to do that with, and that's the, of the five activities in our grant, that's moving the slowest, because it's a lot of paperwork, but mainly because the, and that's only happening in Port Huron. The areas that HUD chose, the target areas, are very high in foreclosed homes, and they're very blighted, and so a lot of people don't want to move in there. And we're having a hard time finding families that, that qualify that can actually buy a home. And there's so many blighted homes there that we want to put more money into demolition. So we're asking to take from 15 homes down to actually 11, and then put the extra $110,000 into demolition to do 21 homes instead of 11. And I do have to ask for one small change from your packet. Your packet showed, my staff report is asking for $116,420 change. I need that to go to 110, less from one category to another, because I spoke with a HUD rep today. We worked out these numbers, and that's just an easier number for demolition, because each demolition costs $10,000 generally. So if you decide that you would like to consider this and take it on to the next board, I would like two numbers to change and not have, not be 116,420, have it be 110. Just a little bit less.
So the-
Are there any questions?
So the first number goes from 216 to 210. Do you, do you pick up the $6,400 in one of the other buckets?
Up, right. The one that was-
Reduced, which is the Energy Efficiency Rehab, so that one goes to 381, 420? Or not 381, excuse me.
391, 420, down to 281, 420.
No, it should go up.
You're transferring-
It should go to, it should go to 281, 420, the, the-
Right.
Right?
281, 420 for NSP III, number four.
Yep.
That's the, that's the home buyer program?
From the original, I was going up from what was proposed, yeah.
Okay, that's right. So it's a difference of $6,420.
Yeah.
That just makes it easier for the numbers to work with. And if, if you have any questions about the program, so far, we've demolished nine homes in Port Huron, two are out for bid. St. Clair Nonprofit has totally rehabbed a home, and it's for sale, and another one is out for bid. And in the Blue Water Habitat, they're working on their fifth home. They've actually completed two, two are in rehab. And of the fourth category, where we're going to do 15 homes, we have two homes complete, one in rehab, one impending, and one out for bid. So that last category is a lot of time and paperwork and finding families to find a home in a small area.
I'd make a motion on this.
Okay, Commissioner Ward has moved the motion, seconded by-
Support.
Commissioner Rushing. Any other questions, Lori?
Lori, would this, do you anticipate the federal government, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, you think they, you look for them to pass these changes? I mean, to okay these changes that you described?
Yes, I've spoken to them several times about this, and they have a general 10% rule about demolition, and we'd be raising it to 18%. And they're seeing a lot more changes than that. They're happy with how we've run our program, and we meet our deadlines. And actually, this is our second round of NSP money that we've gotten. We, we had an NSP I program also.
Will they come out to, to the, have they been here to the, to Port Huron?
We were monitored in May, and then the city of Port Huron actually runs this program for us, and I've monitored them. We're the, the grantee, the city of Port Huron is the sub-recipient. So of the administration money, they get 70%, we get 30%, because they're doing 70% of the work. And we're actually really a small drop in the bucket, a $1.1 million grant. I was at a HUD conference in Detroit, and the, the table next to me was the city of Detroit, and last year, they had 43 million, and this year, they have 29 million. And we have 1 million. I'm just saying, you know, as far as scope, as far as HUD, this is small potatoes, but it makes a big impact in our town.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Lori? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
I'll also send you that revised numbers that we discussed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Matt here with the new contract for regulatory compliance monitoring at the landfill.
Good evening, Commissioners. The first item I have in front of you is a request for recommendation of approval for a contract with Goldren Associates to conduct some routine environmental monitoring that we're required to do by regulation at Smith Creek Landfill. With the assistance of our landfill consultant, Mr. Bob Raitz, we canvassed, we developed an RFP, put it on the street, got some pricing, and selected the most qualified, cost-efficient bidder. Goldren has experience on the site from years past, or at least a number of key personnel who work for that company have. And I am here to request your recommendation to the board for approval.
I'll make the motion. Okay, motion by Commissioner Bohm, second by Commissioner Greitath.
Just one comment on this. This is what they had talked about at the presentation that he had the other day, and there's going to be more of this scope and consolidation of-
Okay, Commissioner Rush, Greitath has a question.
Prices run from 110 to 198, we went with 134, so obviously, we didn't go with the low bidder.
No, we did not. The first two low bidders, I'm not sure I have that part with me that you're looking at.
It's on the back page or you're, on the cover, the, there were some qualification problems on the next page.
The first two low bidders did, did not qualify from what we were looking for, for experience, and I think the third lowest bidder had a math error, which put them to be the fourth lowest bidder. Goldren was then subsequently the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Commissioner Rushing?
You know, imagine we've had to do this annually. What was the cost last year?
Actually, we do this quarterly, and I believe we spent-
Do you know the total for the year, Matt?
Well, eight, the 18,600, that savings is relative to what we spent last year. So under the new contract, that's a three-year total for 134,000. One year of that would be a third of that, 40-
18,000, a third of it's six grand.
I'm sorry?
If, if, if the numbers were 18 grand is the savings, a third of that's six grand.
Six grand in savings?
Well, it's 18,000 annually.
Okay, are they just, well, 18 times 3, then?
55,800.
Yes, there you are.
But you don't recall the presently, what we're charging for?
It's in the 50s.
In the 50s?
In the 50,000s.
Any other questions for Matt? We'll have this at the regular board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you, Matt. And let's see, oh, you're still on for the professional services agreement for the septic secondary containment area lining install, installation.
Let me make the motion.
Support.
I assume this is what we're getting now? I assume this is what we're getting now?
I am just, for completeness sake, giving you the cover. I didn't make the package.
Thank you.
Is that the tank that, the bladder tank that broke?
Yes, it is. This is, we are reconstructing and enhancing our septic tank storage area up at the top of the landfill, a vital part of our RDDP process. And this is the lining, the geomembrane lining of the secondary containment for those bladder tanks. So, we are expanding that area, increasing the size of the storage, and we need to reline that area. And this contract before you, which I'm requesting your recommendation to the full board for approval, is to do that lining work in that area before everything freezes this year.
Matt, I see your recommendation is to not take the low bidder, be it less than $650 difference. Do we risk running bidders away when we don't take the lowest bidder in this situation? We already had, you had three people that you let it to, only two responded.
In this particular instance, I would say no. The low bid, that company is out of Wisconsin. And they typically don't do a whole lot of work in our neck of the woods. I don't know that that would necessarily be the case. The reason why I did go with the second lowest is because of their site experience, my familiarity with the quality of their work. And when we did a little bit of checking, there were a couple of quality issues by the low bidder on similar projects.
Okay, well, you didn't have the quality issues. I just, you know, if you've got somebody that knows they were the low bidder, and you didn't give them the job, are they gonna bother to bid next time? And then you don't have any competition?
I don't have a good answer for you for that, to be honest with you. This, I think this is the first time that I've opted to do this.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, just a question. This is just over a two-month contract to get this thing fixed and replaced.
Actually, it'll take two days. We put a large window for the contract time, just to...
I see it's roughly $39,000, so two-day contract. But I see nothing in the contract if they don't fulfill their duties. If they don't do it in the timeframe, if something happens, I don't see any, just any wording in the contract that would cover that. If they don't fulfill their end of the contract.
By that date?
What's that? If they, they take three months to put it in instead of two days. I don't see anything in the contract if they don't fulfill their end. What recourse does county have?
Well, it's, I don't think there's any likelihood of that happening, to be honest with you, Commissioner. And the contract, I know, is a template that purchasing has developed for this work, but that's certainly something we can go back and discuss with them.
I'm happy with it.
Okay, Commissioner Graytop?
This is gonna replace the bladder tank that ruptured.
This is the lining for the contained, secondary containment for those tanks. We basically build five-foot-high soil berms around where the tanks are gonna be. We line that with a membrane. So, if the tank, God forbid, ruptures or has a leak, we've got containment of that material within that.
Is that ruptured tank repaired now?
No, the ruptured tank is buried. There was no repairing.
We have a new one in place?
No, they are on order.
Okay. Was there any warranty or anything on that as to...
No, we did not.
Why that burst, or...
We went through an exhaustive study of what happened and the circumstances around it. And the manufacturer, along with the company that provided the materials for the tank construction, made a site visit, because this is the first time a tank of theirs has been used to store septic. So, we did a lot of analysis, a lot of looking to see why it happened. In short, from what I understand from the manufacturer, the adhesive layer within the wall of the tank was subject to a process called hydrolysis, essentially water vapor working its way through the tank walls, which degraded the adhesive holding the tank wall itself together. They have a vastly improved adhesive now, and the new tanks we're gonna get will have that in it. That being said, the tanks we had exceeded the three-year warranty that they offered for the tanks in general. The service...
The other tank that's in place there, will that, is that one of the old style?
We saw some signs of degradation on that as well, and we've removed that from service and have disposed of that. So, it was showing signs of the same thing coming along.
Okay, did we get a motion on this?
Yes, we did.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Any, well, why don't you stay there in case there's some questions about the activities report? Do you mind?
Not at all.
Any questions? Well, wait a minute.
I'd make a motion to receive and file...
I don't have an activities report.
Neither do I.
So, I guess, thank you, Matt.
Okay.
Any other environmental public works matters? Seeing none? Information only, the National Water Trail System, the proposed Blue Water, Blueways application. That, great job. Lori, do you want to talk about that?
I hope you're all familiar with our Blueways website. As part of that, I was made aware of a website called the National Water Trails. It's part of the National Park Service. And our most popular route of our 16 routes in the Blueways is the Island Loop. And when I got thinking about it and looking at the website, it really meets a lot of the criteria. They have benchmarks, and it meets so many of the benchmarks. I got really excited about it. So, some of the benchmarks that this trail meets are education. We have the national, Atchison Ventures Maritime Education Center. They have the freighters going by. We have the lighthouse, of which I visited for the first time. Been here 27 years. I visited it on Labor Day, and it was lovely.
We're proud of you.
And we have Thomas Edison Museum, the Blue Water Bridges, the Huron Lightship, which is a national historic landmark, five parks, two handicapped accessible kayak launches along that route, two boat launches, and then four of the parks have water access, like Lakeside Beach, Lighthouse Park. So, basically, there's all kinds of public water access along this 10-mile loop, and handicapped accessible, all kinds of restaurants, hotels, an international border, Lake Surgeon spawning habitat. So, I think they'd be really excited, and I called them yesterday because I had a question on the application. I haven't turned it in, I'm just starting to fill it out. And the National Park Service person asked me about the website, and he was really excited about it. So, I think we would have a good chance of getting National Water Trail recognition for that site. And what it would do for us, it would be a positive economic impact for our area, bring in tourism. I think it would be exciting to have a National Park Service, I guess it isn't a facility, it's a trail, in our county. And it would just highlight our beautiful waters and also why we need to keep them clean if people were using them more, people from around the world and around the states, and they're actually in the water that we're drinking. I think it would just make awareness on a lot of different levels. So, there is no, I guess, vote. I'm just asking for your permission to apply for this National Water Trail designation. I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Could we have a motion to give her permission to apply?
So moved. Support.
Okay, it's been moved. Does Lori have any questions, Lori? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Thank you.
I can tell you, a lot of kayakers and canoeists going by my place really made a difference. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to receive and file packets.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
We'll adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
At this time, I'd call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Ways and Means Committee to order. Take the roll, please.
Commissioner Smasco?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any citizens wishing to address the committee? Seeing none? Any updates? Conceptual initiatives? Old Business, Resolution 1228, Michigan Liquor Control Commission, issuance of liquor license for convention center.
Make the motion.
Board, questions?
This is gonna go to full board?
Yes.
It was, I did have a question on that, and I did, I was able to ascertain to my satisfaction what the problem was. That resolution states in the, just before the now, therefore, says St. Clair County Board of Commissioners desires to obtain a liquor license for the convention center with OCM Development LLC acting as a participant in said license. And it's really, they're not a participant in said license. They are participant under said license pursuant to a licensing agreement approved by the LCC according to the Michigan Administrative Code for those purposes. So, I'd like to clean that language up, because when I looked at that, I said, "They're not participating in my license." So, the language I was gonna do for Corporation Council would be something like, you know, "Subject to an LCC-approved participation agreement with OCM Development, LCC, or similar entity pursuant to Rule 17 of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Administrative Rules." I think that's really what it is, and I don't want any... I was thinking, they had, if they had a problem, it would affect our license, because they participate in our license. It's kind of a nuance, but...
Yeah, we got an email earlier today.
So, subject to that, I would, I would like that added, or...
Well, this is, this will go on to full board, and we have motion and support, so we'll, we'll suggest that that gets revised.
I'll send you an email, I got some...
It's the same idea, Steve, so I think it's okay.
Right. They just want a said participant in said license. They're really not participating in the license. They're participating under the license, subject to an approved participation agreement.
That would be how it would work, that's correct.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, with that revision, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 7A, under New Business, Civil Engineering Contract for Blue Water Area Convention Center, Tetra Tech, for final action.
Make the motion.
Support.
Questions? Any discussion? Take the roll, please.
Commissioner Smasco?
No.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
7B, Court Security Department Manning Table Changes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support? Commissioner Graytop? Questions?
We do have Mr. Stier here that runs the security.
I think it's fairly clearly laid out in the memo. There's no questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Library Manning Table Adjustment. Again, that's laid out in the memo. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, Professional Service Agreement for Document Shredding, CINTAS. Is there a motion?
Motion. Support.
Second.
Questions? We do this every year, don't we? I had a question as far as the local bidder. Did you get an answer on that? It was? It was, okay. They, they... They had an opportunity. Okay. Any other questions?
Just one second, Tim. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.